I'll call this regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order October 9th at 5:30. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no amendments to the agenda. Does anybody have any needed amendments that they know of? Okay. And we have no visitors, at least not signed up.
Paula is actually here for the agenda item.
No, 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 that's just a figure of speech.
She's here for an agenda item.
Yeah, yeah, trustee.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All right, minutes. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th.
I'll make the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. Okay, any amendments to the minutes?
Add two items. Second line from the bottom on the first page, unless your municipality has an ordinance prohibiting, I would insert violation of this right, there is no standing in the court, he stated.
Can I add anything?
Right. And then on the last page, appointment of trustee to Bixby Board. The second line, their recommendation for a new trustee who will replace Christine Bradford.
Okay. And I have one, I think, and that's why I read it wrong. It's on the third page in the VLC draft municipal policy, and it's one, two, three lines down. It says, as he is on the fair committee, he should be voting what the city council wants and not what he wants?
The city council.
Council, yeah. Okay, anything else? If none, we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Motion carries. Citizens comments?
Just one second.
What?
Question on the warrant.
On the warrant, okay.
I did ask Greg, and he didn't know the answer because he wasn't at the office, but maybe Matt would know. The VLCT.
Yes.
You have a budget of $4,015, but it looks like it got paid out as $41,836. Is that a typo or a mis?
That sounds like a keystroke error.
Okay, that's just what I want to know.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Greg in the morning. Thank you for that.
Citizens comments?
I want to be able to speak towards the Bixby Library trustee, which is on your agenda.
Oh, okay, okay, when we get there.
Yep.
All right, so the minutes have been done. We'll head right on to business here. And it is 5A, NIMS adoption.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. So in your packet is a document that we are looking to adopt as our designation of national incident management systems, or NIMS is the acronym. And what it does is it basically gives us guidelines in case of not only emergency action that may be required on behalf of the city, but it also can be used for large group gatherings, you know, multiple different functions. I'm not certain that it has to be an adoption by the council, but I do believe you guys, everyone should be aware. So one of the first things I needed to do in my role was take a FEMA course online to be able to be an administrator of NIMS, setting us up for, you know, it's really chain of command in the event of either unplanned or planned incident. And there are multiple steps and courses I'm going to have to go through to get better prepared in case of an emergency. But really, this is, should I read this out, Rennie, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The council wants further clarification.
Okay. So basically, all this is saying is that, you know, we are adopting NIMS as our emergency preparedness, incident preparedness, and that I am authorized to be able to sign this document.
So we don't need a motion on this?
I don't believe we do.
Okay.
I just think it's important.
And just for your knowledge also, there are many members of our fire department that are at the highest level of this, these NIMS training, because there are certain ones you can do online, and then there are other ones that you actually have to go to a class and attend and get the training, so.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you for that.
So we're here at the report regarding the non-retaliatory statement. I'm surprised to not see Bob here.
As am I. So at our last city council meeting, Bob Trupanier had come to remind us he was requesting clarification of our city's stand as it pertains to non-retaliatory behavior. I had an opportunity to meet with Bob really this week and review the resolution, the senior packet, that was passed by the city council on the 22nd of August 2017. And I called particularly to his attention, the Virgin City Council, and I'm paraphrasing, to be free from discrimination.
You're the one who marked that for me.
Yeah, thank you. Discrimination in public accommodations. And that was really where his focus has been. He refers to it as the Sarah Huckabee Sanders incident, and wanted to ensure that Virgin's was an inclusive community. In reviewing this with Bob, he felt that provided that the city council agreed that this was inclusive of everybody, which I believe it clearly states that it is, that he is fine with this standing as is and doesn't require any further action on behalf of the council.
Does he understand that the resolution has no power in law?
He does understand that it is strictly a statement on behalf of the city.
Okay.
And isn't looking, frankly, isn't looking for anything more than that.
Okay.
But he is looking for the nodding heads that I'm seeing, so thank you very much, unless there's any concern.
Well, I did talk with VLCT. Actually, I had all of their attorneys since it was the VLCT Municipal Conference this past week, and all of them were there, so I was able to talk with all of them altogether. And they sent me an opinion on Bob's, you know, request that there be an ordinance to prohibit basically discrimination on the basis of political affiliation. And as I said at that time, is that I didn't think that it would be legal for us to do that, because Vermont is not a home rule state, and we only can do things that the legislature actually specifically authorizes us to do, and the legal opinion is that. And so I think I will read, it's not very long, so I'll read it. Vermont is what is known as a Dillon's Rule state. According to the Vermont Supreme Court, we have consistently adhered to the so-called Dillon's Rule, that a municipality has only those powers and functions specifically authorized by the legislature, and such additional functions as may be incident, subordinate, or necessary to exercise thereof. In essence, this principle of governance stands for the proposition that municipalities have only those powers and can only perform those functions specifically authorized by the legislature, and such additional functions as may be incident, subordinate, or necessary to the exercise of those functions. To my knowledge, the Vermont Legislature has not granted municipalities such authority, therefore such a regulatory activity would, in our opinion, most likely be seen as ultra The definition of that is unauthorized beyond the scope of power allotted or granted by law. So that is the legal opinion on that, and we do not have the power. Anybody have any questions on that one?
We have the power under the First Amendment, so.
Yeah, that's another one that they questioned. I'm surprised they didn't put it in there. Okay, so we're down to 5D, downtown basin master plan task force appointment. I have one more, well, I'll nominate one more person for an appointment. That's the other Virgin's partnership representative, which would be Bill Benton. He's on the Virgin Partnership Board. And actually, he's a real appropriate one considering that he lives there, so. Does anyone have any other nominees for that task force? Remember, it's your task force, so I'm not the one that has to find all the members. So if not, I'll need a motion to appoint Bill Benton to, as the VP rep on that task force. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, thank you. All right, so we move to item 5D, appointment of trustee to Bixby Board. And Paula, do you want to address that?
Well, I have my memo asking your consideration of the candidate that the Bixby Board was recommending to you. If I can answer any questions about it, I'd be glad to.
Okay. And this is, let's see.
Martha Mack.
Martha Mack, yes. Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Susan Farland. And in looking at the Bixby bylaws, there is a procedure for a vacancy and the city appointing someone to the Bixby Board. And that procedure does not involve any kind of recommendation from the board. The president is supposed to notify the city that there is a vacancy, and the city is supposed to appoint someone to the board. And I have the bylaws here.
Does that apply to the one, there's one trustee that is actually the representative of the council?
Right. And I believe the one that you're looking at is?
The representative of the council.
Right.
Right.
It is. And I realize that this person is appointed at your pleasure, and this was just a recommendation that I'm putting forth to you as an aid for you. We are definitely on the move at the Bixby Board. We are trying to attract some younger participants on our board, and I'm very excited about the possibility of people who have been coming forward that are interested in serving on our Bixby Board. Right now, we have four representatives from Ferrisburg and one from Virgin's, so we are trying to balance it out again, not only in the representation from the communities, but also in the demographics in our towns. I am in no way suggesting that you must do what I am proposing here. I'm just putting it out for your consideration, if you would like to.
And so the bylaws? I don't have them in front of me. Do what?
Susie's correct. Susie's is correct.
When a vacancy occurs on the board, the following procedures will be followed. If the vacancy is that of the city-appointed trustee, the president will contact the mayor of Virgin's and ask that the city council appoint a person to the board.
Okay.
So basically, according to the bylaws, the only thing that should have happened is Paula, or whoever was acting as president at the time, should have contacted the city, said there is a board, and then the city, I'm guessing this has happened before, would look to what their procedure is for appointing someone to the board, whether it's opening it up to the public at large, like you did for one of the vacancies on the council before, write a letter of interest, submit it to the board, and then decide from there. I think in this case, the bylaws are there for a reason, and they need to be followed.
I would just comment that I think technically they were followed. I mean, we were notified of Christine's death, untimely death, and I don't think it's unreasonable at all for the council to look to the board of trustees to recommend who they would like to see. And we, as Paula said, don't, we are not obliged to appoint their recommendation. But I think it's, just because it's not in there does not mean they were in any way violated.
True, but I think the intent is to make it a pure decision on your part and to open it up to the city at large. There is no other way for a trustee to get on the board for the city of Virgin's without the president's approval. And I think you need to leave that open, that venue. And again, I don't know what your past procedure has been, but I'm guessing that like with the council, most often you've opened it up to the public at large and asked, are there interested parties who'd like to be a part of the trustees? And then to go forward, I think.
I think actually Christine was appointed after a conversation she had with Mel. And so it actually did not, if we can make the same argument, that we've not followed that before.
And that's different from the board coming to you. That's a member of the community going to the city saying, I have an interest, I hear there's an opening.
Well, for other boards, actually, with the library, I think it is pretty much how we've done it in the past. But we've done it with other boards. When we've had vacancies in other boards, we've asked those boards to make a recommendation to us as to who they thought should be put onto that board, and we follow that.
And that's fine, as the city, you want to do that, then you would sit here at the meeting and say, well, you know, we got notified by the Bixby Library Board, there's a vacancy of the city rep, we're going to ask for their input, and we're also going to open it up to the public at large. I think you need to not take that away from the public.
I might suggest that we table this item, and we could post via Front Porch Forum that there is an opening on the Bixby Board available, and interested applicants could send their letters of interest to you, Rennie.
Okay.
And is there any way to check to see what prior practice has been on behalf of the city? I know you remember Christine Bradford's, but this has been going on for a long time. It's not just.
I don't know, other than trying to check through the minutes, if people could remember when there was an appointment. Other than that, I'm not so sure. Joan, we don't keep them in like a log or anything like that, right?
No. So you'd have to go through the minutes to see.
Well, the minutes would just say a motion like today. Right. There's a little discussion, someone made a motion to.
Right. But has this procedure been followed beforehand where you're contacted by the library, told there's a vacancy, and that you need to appoint someone, and then you bring it to the board?
Well, that has happened, and I think in the past, what we've asked is the library board if they have anybody that they think should be serving in that capacity, or I think in other times, just a council member would say, I know somebody who's interested in serving, and we would appoint them.
I'm not sure, I'm not particularly sure in this instance how it's been done. I mean, it's been around a long time. But I can tell you how I think it should be done with anything where we're dealing with public assets. And it's a catch-22, because, and we've had this discussion, that our process for appointments is lacking. But at the same time, we have some difficulty getting people to come forward. I mean, I'm encouraged because of the turnout that we had from our young people on the Recreation Committee. That's very, very encouraging, and I'm hopeful that continues. But historically, it has been somewhat difficult to fill positions on boards. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't make an attempt to do a better job with our selection process. And, you know, to me, I mean, that would involve having somebody come in and have an opportunity to tell us a little bit about themselves, and us to have the opportunity to ask questions. And, you know, hopefully, the answers would be, you know, I mean, it goes without saying, you know, that everyone, you know, I love Virgin's and I'd like to help. I mean, you know, that's great, but it goes a little more, or it should go a little more in depth. I mean, I've sat on a bunch of different committees, and I've sat on a bunch of different boards, and the important thing is, in addition to, in addition to those two things, that somebody has to have some level of aptitude for the subject matter. And, you know, so that's my two cents. I mean, I'd agree with Matt that, you know, we table, I mean, let's invite this person to come in. I mean, if it'll, does that, I mean, both of you here, is that something that you think makes sense?
It's clearly your appointment.
Sure.
And you should feel comfortable with the person that you are vetting for that position. We have done the preliminary vetting on this one candidate, and I will do whatever the board recommends to me, city council.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Unless anybody has an objection, I think we can follow the city manager's recommendation of, we'll just hold off on this, on the agenda, and at least post it on Front Porch Forum.
Not this coming, but the following Friday, and then have people come in at our next meeting like we did just a few weeks ago.
For the meeting on the 25th, right?
Whatever.
Yeah, the next meeting, yeah.
The only thing I have to comment on, and I, you know, I have no problem with this procedure, but we didn't, we didn't interview for the zoning board. We didn't, you know, we don't interview for all of those different positions that got filled when Mel left. And we asked the zoning board for a recommendation for a zoning administrator. We asked, you know, for recommendations for other positions that we have. I don't know Martha Mack at all, and I have no idea who she is, but obviously, for her resume, she's very qualified. And I do believe there, you know, there can be a system that's done, but I don't, I don't want to get so hung up that we don't get any candidates.
Sure.
And in this case, I hope the message gets back to Martha that this had nothing to do with her, it only had to do with the process, and that, you know, more than likely, she's a very capable candidate. She certainly seemed to be. So I don't want anyone leaving here thinking, well, she wasn't good enough to do this, because that's not true at all. So, and either we're all going to do this all the same, all the time, or we're going to do it the way we've always done it, and ask for the committees to give us a recommendation.
I'd agree. The only thing that I'd point out is this is different in that, in the case of the DRB, in the case of the planning commission, we appointed all of those folks.
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah, but we're dealing with a board where there's a number of people on the board that we didn't appoint.
Well, I'm there, I'm sorry.
So that's the difference, I mean, with this, you know, but I agree. I mean, I don't want, I certainly don't want the candidate to think that, you know, in all likelihood, I mean, she'll come forward, she'll come in and talk to us, and she'll get appointed. I mean, it's.
There may be nobody else that.
Absolutely.
See, the other thing I would just point out is, the other bodies you're talking about are actual city groups, where from what I understand about the Bixby, they're not part of the municipality. They're incorporated, which puts them under a different umbrella.
That's correct.
Than the city. So I think in that respect, their process is a little different than any of the other groups, city groups, that you're working with.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. All right, so we're on to item 6A, multi-town recycling meeting.
That could be somewhat amended, as I'm going to be taking an interim step before I meet with the surrounding community regarding our recycling pickup down at, on Canal Street. In speaking with Cheryl Brinkman this morning, who serves on the Addison County Solid Waste District, we're going to be meeting with CNJ Hallers on Wednesday of next week, and Terry, and Terry escapes my, my, her last name escapes me, who's also from Addison County Solid Waste District.
Kaczynski.
Kaczynski, thank you very much. There are changes coming, you know, to our ability to be able to continue to have recycling pickup handled by Casella, as Mel had indicated later this, earlier this spring or over the summer, and not the least of which are financial impacts to all four communities. So, that being said, I'm trying to move the conversation forward first, again, with the Addison County Solid Waste District and CNJ Hallers, who do trash pickup, and then move it out into Walthampton and Ferrisburg. I don't have much more information than that, other than I'm trying to get my head around the potential impacts of Casella not picking up recycling at Canal Street starting January 1st of this year.
And it's, that's obviously a big, big issue. We'll hear about that. I mean, my thoughts on it are this, is that like in most things, you know, it's a business venture, essentially. You have to stay really small or be really big. In between is what kills you, you know? So those are my thoughts, and I'm not, you know, I mean, you're more than capable of figuring that out. Thank you. Well, I mean, you know.
There's a lot of moving parts to this.
I mean, you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, it's a situation where, you know, is the discussion that, you know, we have some micro situation down there that just handles Virgin's, and is that economically feasible? Or do we pursue having some sort of a regional center? Maybe that's economically feasible, maybe it isn't, but it certainly sounds like the way things are currently will not continue to work.
That is accurate.
Okay.
So everything's on the table, and I'm in fact-finding mode, and we'll be convening meetings, as I said, with those two different groups, and I would hope to have something sooner rather than later to share with the council.
It's like not the first time you've seen a situation like that.
Well, in this particular situation, I actually think that the Solid Waste District has the legal responsibility to actually take care of this.
That is absolutely correct.
I mean, we got into this many years ago. I don't know how many years, but it's been a long time, and I'm not sure the reasons why at the time. I'm not even sure that the Solid Waste Management District even existed at the time that this started, and maybe that's why it started. But the district is responsible for all waste management in Addison County, all waste management. So it really is their responsibility. Matt is just kind of helping them along to get to it, because there's a potential crisis at the end of the year if they don't.
I wonder if any more has been done on the stump dump, because unfortunately, I'm hearing stories of people putting lawn, grass clipping leaves in the garbage and trying to pass it off as garbage, because there is nowhere to bring it in Virgin's anymore. And some of our lots are tiny, and there's nowhere to put it.
I can't speak specifically. I do not believe that any action has been taken regarding trying to reopen the stump dump.
Okay.
But I do know that, you know, yard waste and coming up in 2020, food scraps are not allowed in, you know, general trash. You know, there's, there are a lot of different discussions that I'm involved in right now regarding this situation, and, you know, not the least of which, David's point, is, you know, a regional drop-off center somewhere in northern Addison County that would be able to receive everything that currently they receive down in Middlebury. So this is kind of unfolding as we speak.
I talked to Mel, golly, it must have been last spring, about the possibility of maybe using the old quarry out on Lee Street as a possible stump dump site, but he felt he felt that with the water reservoir above it, that that wasn't the most secure. But I know you do land up by the McDonough, not the McDonough Monument, but up by the McIntosh Homestead. I mean, perhaps to help facilitate things, perhaps some of that could be put towards just garden waste, which is usually pretty innocuous. I mean, clippings, leaves, twigs, and branches. Again, there are a lot of people in the city who are having a hard time figuring out what to do with this stuff.
Okay.
6B, American Public Works First Responder.
I see this as an asset to our Public Works Department. So this is recently adopted. It was actually under George W. Bush back in 2003, under some directive he put out regarding management of domestic incidents. What we're doing really is recognizing, not just us, but nationwide, recognizing our Department of Public Works as first responders. And, you know, traditionally, we think of fire department, rescue squad, and the like. But really, the Public Works are integral in responding, reacting, and restoring order after major incidents in any community. So as part of George W. Bush's directive, they've rolled out this new branding, Public Works First Responder, and this is really meant to be, you know, on our vehicles, on their helmets, on their shirts, on their, you know, clothing. And I think to me, to my mind, again, it just, it reflects the critical role that they do play in our community on, you know, when things go bad, you know, we depend on them to help us get things right. So that's just really kind of an FYI, and you will start to see this branding starting to roll out in the near future.
I love the idea and I hate the design.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
Just brings to mind the movie The Wall by Pink Floyd.
Right.
Where they're, got their flags marked. That's exactly what came to my, I was like, what is?
Thank you, Merk.
Okay. 6C.
6C. Okay. So Mahawi versus City of Virgins. I merely mean to report that I met with the owner of Mahawi LLC, who is David Shalansky. David has agreed to a 60-day stay, so he has filed with the Supreme Court, which is where this was headed, a request for a 60-day stay, which our city attorney has agreed to. We are working in good faith to attempt to understand how the overall zoning application process may be made better for all. And I'm also working very closely with Peter Garen, who is our newly-appointed zoning administrator, who has a lot more experience in this arena than I do. So I'm going to leave it at that. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, budget?
Budget. Budget's okay. It's funny, I'm not sure where Lynn's warrant issue came up, and I will review that tomorrow. Just so you guys are aware, I think I told you the last meeting, I do meet with my department heads monthly, and we review, you know, where we think we're running into issues. We are, you know, I will tell you that in the warrants that were just passed, there was another $6,500 payment to our city attorney for Mahawi versus City of Virgins. I was not able to get in front of that one. And we continue to watch, you know, payroll is something that's kind of creeping up in one of our departments, so I'm just going to stay on top of that. We're paying our bills. This was a pretty substantial warrant packet that went out today. We had over $100,000 worth of paving for McDonough Drive and the Booth Woods Project, which both came out great. Yeah, thank you. I'll pass that along to Jim Laro. I'm not seeing anything else jump off the page at this time. But as Joan tells me, we are looking forward to tax and sewer time to come in, so we can stay in front of everything. Yes, sir.
One thing I noticed is the park, the police fines and stuff is 4%, but I noticed the traffic is not slowing down. So is there any way we may mention getting out there and patrolling a little more?
Absolutely.
Looking for speeders? Because I know I can find them. Easily, right by my house.
Chief Merkel has been very receptive to directed enforcement, based on the information that I'm providing to him. So if you don't mind him parking in your driveway some morning...
I have no objection.
He'll probably be there very soon.
Okay. Have anything else?
That's it. No, sir.
Okay, Item 7, Mayor's Report. Before I get into the truck study committee, why don't you make a few comments about the Recreation Committee and the Pool Committee?
So both the Pool Committee and the Recreation Committee have met, and there already has been established a priority list for both the Pool and the Recreation Committee. So when the Recreation Committee met on Monday, the Pool and the area, the general area around all of the tennis courts, the skate park, flooding of the, is going to be the area that the Recreation Committee is going to concentrate on. We're not going to open any more parks. We're not going to do any more new things until we have the things that we have back in tip-top shape. So with your permission, because the Pool is the number one priority of the Recreation Committee, we'd like to join the Pool Committee, which is very small, to, into the Recreation Committee, so that we all are working at the same thing, and we don't do anything counterproductive. The Pool Committee has put up a job description together, which I asked them to do for the Pool Manager. There really wasn't a job description of what that Pool Manager was supposed to do. My only comment was that I felt there was no checks and balances for the finances, and that I wanted something to be added to that before we present it to the council for acceptance. One person may have the cash one day, somebody else might have it another way, and it gets passed to whatever. There's no, there's no string that should be. And so I've asked them to do that. But I think that they're very energetic. They have lots of great ideas, and we're going to meet, the Recreation Committee is going to meet once a month, the second Wednesday of every month, at 6:00 at the City Hall. So if you're listening out there, and you want to join and come and visit and see what's going on, the minutes are going to be posted on the city website, and so are the warnings. So you just go there, and you can find out anything you want to do. So I think it went really great, and I think we have a really fabulous group.
There was, there was some discussion with the Pool to having a separate person, hopefully a volunteer, to actually deal with collecting money and taking care of that stuff. Wanted to be a separate person, because I think right now, don't the lifeguards or the staff, they do it? And really, that is a function that they probably shouldn't or don't want to do, that we might be able to find volunteers to do that. And then that does separate who handles the finances. So it may solve a couple of things by going in that direction, but I don't know whether there'll be volunteers out there or not. But there, I know there have been discussions about doing it that way, having a separate person, instead of some of the staff people doing it.
I think in this environment that we're in, I think it's got to be someone who, it can be one person. It's got to be dual people or three people, so that there's no question of how the money's being handled. And, you know, nobody can go back and say, "Well, we're missing this, or we're missing that." And I'm not saying that's happening.
Right.
But I just felt that that was lacking in the description for the manager. So if it's not going to be the manager, they're going to figure out some other way to follow the finances.
Great. Thank you. In front of you, you have a committee charge for a committee that I'm establishing. This would be a mayor's committee, and it's the 22-way Truck Traffic Study Committee. To have the committee is not my initial idea. It was really Jeff, and Dave, and Matt, who kind of chatted about having a committee to have more focus on certain parts of the study, because, you know, we have the study going on with the consultants. And I certainly had a concern about the fact that the ultimate end might be a recommendation to have a alternate truck route going around virgins. But if that is the ultimate recommendation, it's going to be a long time before that happens. And I know at the meeting on this with the consultants, the public meeting, I expressed a concern about what do we do in the interim to try and deal with that, because a lot can happen to us in that, in those number of years, whatever they might be, before that big deal happens. And so the three gentlemen that I mentioned thought, well, maybe having a committee that can give more focus to the interim, possible interim solutions, would be a good thing, and a way for the city to show more involvement in this whole process of trying to do something about the truck traffic. So if this committee is really successful, it was my idea, and if it's not successful, it's their idea. But, so, you see that there are two people already on it, two council members, Jeff Fritz as chair, and David Austin. The one business owner, the one that I will be appointing, is Heidi Mahoney. And Heidi is the operations manager for David Shalansky, and you know that he has multiple properties in virgins, several on Main Street. And it just seems appropriate that somebody with those kinds of connection and that much property would be able to have some input on this. And we're looking for two virgins residents, preferably on Main Street, and hopefully we can find them in the next few weeks. The intention is, with this committee, I put in the general charge that it was an ad hoc committee. It truly is an ad hoc committee. The intention is really to only have three, maybe four, meetings of this committee to kind of gather information, then kind of churn through the information, and come up with some ideas on what might be done, and hopefully to work closely with the consultants that are working on this, because they're kind of doing a similar thing. But I'm not so sure that they would have the concentrated effort on the interim solution as much as an independent committee working on it. So that's my intention. And do you have any suggestions about people or change in the charge? I think I covered what I thought I needed to cover in the charge.
I think the only thing I would suggest, and it's just a suggestion, is that we have, when we go to the two virgins residents, that one be from West Main Street and one be from North Main Street.
Yes.
We have someone from North Main who is interested, but would like a little more information before she makes the commitment. I'm really hopeful that she will join us. But what we are looking for is someone from the other end of Main Street. So I would just maybe look to Lowell for a little input down there.
Maybe you have a neighbor that would be interested.
Just let us know.
Okay. So that's all I have in my mayor's report. Does anybody have anything else to come before the council?
It's nice to see you. A little celebration of blinky lights?
Yes.
Yes.
I missed it, because I was at a different corner, but I heard good things.
It was great. It was fabulous.
Your son was fabulous.
Yeah, he's on the news.
Always is. He's such a good kid.
Yes, he represented us well. Okay.
I'll make the motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks.
Take your own.